Good evening, everyone. We'll call a meeting to order. Rebecca, would you please call the roll?
Flornoy?
Here.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
To Hill?
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel, any additions to this evening's agenda before we move to our consent agenda? If not, we'll move to our consent agenda items. And in there, we have approval of minutes from the February 11th council meeting. We have approval of the February 22nd payroll of $112,732.26. Acceptance of the Wayfinding Commission minutes. Acceptance of the Library Board minutes. A resolution of employment in Park and Recreation for Bailey Travis, part-time desk attendant. And also approval of liquor licenses for Revelations and Walmart Store 985. Claims in the amount of $715,435.77. Of those, the claim above $75,000 would be to PKG Contracting. The contract is for our wastewater treatment plant. Any questions, counsel, regarding those consent agenda items? If not, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved?
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes, but I should abstain from the minutes.
Okay. Flornoy?
Yes.
To Hill?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Now, counsel, we'll move to our public forum. And we have David Goodman here this evening to address the council about a deer crossing on North B Street. David?
Good evening. I live on campus and I go on B Street a lot. And one day, I was driving just before 9:00 in the morning. My wife was beside me and she screamed, "Stop." And because of that, I had a near miss that I did not hit the deer. But I came really close. And had she not been beside me, I know I would've hit the deer. I got a little upset about that, feeling that, you know, I live on campus, I live in Fairfield. I can go slow enough. What about people who are staying with us as guests? Or people from out of town? You're going down a hill and you have to put your brake on just to stay at the speed limit. And then you go up the hill. And this happened to me that one time. And I came to a committee and I talked about it. And I was told, "Get some data." I went to the police office in Fairfield. They said that it would cost you so much an hour. It's an open-ended, and you'd have to pay for it. And I don't then generally want to spend money that's open-ended. So I let it go and didn't see any deer for quite some time. And then two more events happened. One where I had to slam my brakes. Luckily enough, did not hit it. And then, just about a couple of weeks ago, I was driving down B Street again towards downtown and I saw about 10 deer. And I was, there was enough of them, and I saw them in the distance, that I was really, that I just slowed down and stopped. I would like to have a sign on both sides. And that, in my opinion, would alert not so much people in Fairfield who kind of know it, but people from out of town. Yes, I've heard the jokes that the deer can't read. I believe that a sign on both sides, yes, deer may cross north of that or south. But it puts it in people's awareness that you need to be aware. And that's all I want to do, is to make a petition that there's a deer crossing sign on both sides of the highway. Where this happened was right near Crow Creek. And I know that there's deer all throughout Fairfield. I don't tend to go that often around where the country club is. I'm sure there's deer there, near Lamson Woods and all that and other places, I'm sure. But this is where I live. And it's my request that there be a deer sign put on both sides of the highway around Crow Creek. And I'm willing to pay for it. That's it. That's my presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Now, has this, do I understand that this went through public safety at one time?
I went there, yes.
Okay. So if we could have a report for public safety, what was the discussion about it at that time?
So David came to a meeting some months ago. It was on the agenda. And as per our standard, we ask our department heads, who are the street department and police, for their input. And Daryl Bizzard, street department superintendent, felt that it's not common to put these on streets that aren't, that don't have a higher than 35 mile-per-hour speed limit. That that's not, it's not a standard to do that, which is what B Street has. And then we asked Police Chief Thomas if there were any stats of that area of crashes. And he said he wasn't aware of any. It's not something that was on the police's radar as a high-crash area. So then we asked fellow committee members if anyone wanted to take this to council. None did. So it didn't move from committee. I told David at that point that he could then come to full council if he wanted to, petition to full council. And that's how, that's how it was left.
Thank you. Counsel, any responses? I know that is a heavily wooded area. No question about it. And there are other dense wooded areas in town that obviously would be perfect deer habitat as well. You know, we did put in place a new policy for culling some of the deer in our community. I don't know that we're really working with DNR to track numbers specifically on that, but we have taken some steps to mitigate the deer. But comments on signage?
My biggest concern is if we put up a sign anywhere in town, whether it's B Street or down by the country club, we're kind of opening a Pandora's Box. Because just the other day, I mean, you can drive any street, Fillmore, Harrison. I mean, they're everywhere. My street, I live on a dead end. They don't even care that it's a dead end. I mean, and so my fear is that if we take that on, I appreciate your willingness to pay for the signs, but if it starts, then where do we stop it? And not only the sign, I mean, the sign costs is one thing, but then we have the labor to put it in the ground. And then you have maintenance, and you have to worry about, you know, right-ofways and things like that. So my fear is that we start it legitimately, they could be all over town. And I know that we have a lot of signs already.
I agree. I mean, you can put them every 100 yards in some spots.
Well, I mean, you know, like, on D Street, they just walk right up and down the street. They don't even, they cross, but they walk on, you know, if you go in your car, they're walking right along beside the car with you. And then they finally decide that they'll come and graze at our yard, you know, anywhere from 8 to 10. And then they race across and go over the country club, and then they race back again. And so we have a tremendous number of them, I must admit.
I really hope the effort that we started with culling the deer and trying to encourage them out, we won't see results for that in at least probably the first two to three years. But eventually, hopefully, they'll realize this is not a safe space and they'll start moving back out.
I'd be curious to know how many licenses or tags we sold?
Do you know?
No, I can have an answer for you next.
No hurry, I'm just curious. We can update on that.
Yeah, that'd be a great.
I know on campus, MU and campus, I think they cleared a section of wood.
They did.
On campus because deer were gathering there. I know that sidewalk that runs on B Street, north and south, that was in the sidewalk, that sidewalk was only put in place a few years ago. There used to be woods which came up right up to the road. I think deer gathered there. So I think, at least right now, compared to what it was like three or four years ago, there's a little bit more warning for driver coming up and down B Street. You're going to see the deer because of the sidewalk to the, well, as you're going north, the sidewalk to the east, you're going to have a little bit more warning that there are deer gathering or crossing. And on the other side, on the west side, it's mostly lawn, not so many trees. So you're going to see the deer on the west side. So while I appreciate that signage would make, give some people some alertness, I think even, even the visiting driver, there's enough visibility on both east and west side as you're going north on B Street or south, that you're going to see the deer either on the lawn or off the sidewalk. So you're going to have some warning rather than, as opposed to a deer right up against the side of the road where you don't see them and just sort of dart out. So I do have, I share the same concern that if you have a sign, or you put in place signs on B Street that we're talking about, you're going to have citizens around the city ask for something similar and it's going to end up being, maybe, maybe, maybe there's a concern of too much notice.
But I haven't seen anybody else request this. I'm the only one. Has anybody else made a request for this?
We've had deer complaints, and it's not as much as they want us to put up signs, they want us to do something about the deer population.
Right.
Which were, this is our first year of putting in force a new effort. And we're going to do work that out there, aren't we, along Crow Creek? So we'll be doing a little bit more clearing with our Step Two.
The only, I think the only difference in this situation is getting back to the speed limit. The municipal speed limit is 25.
It is.
And at 25, that should be, if somebody is going at a speed limit, that should be enough to slow down.
I know, but the thing is-
That's my point. My point is-
The thing is, you're going down a hill.
My point is that at that area, it's 35. So it is a little bit higher speed than some of the other areas that we're talking about. It's not 50 or 55, which is where you really, it appears that that's where the signs are really intended for, more on that highway. But if there was one place in town that it maybe is justifiable, there is a little bit higher speed limit there.
What about the idea of, I don't know if this is possible, even, something that the council would support, but if you had one sign on one side of the road?
Which side?
I don't know. Maybe on the east side, on the sidewalk side, as you're driving north.
I just think that, for a person like myself, I'm aware. I'm completely vigilant going down there. I know there's deer. And so I have nothing to gain financially from this. This is totally a citizen's request. I think that for all the people who visit, who aren't aware that that's going to be possible, those are the people that I'm concerned about. And I'm lucky I didn't hit one. I slammed my brakes because my wife alerted me. And then I would've been one of the statistics.
You say you're aware.
I'm aware to go slowly there.
Do we have many reports of visitors who had a concern?
I don't know. It's just a hypothetical. I mean, it's just like, it seems to me that you're going down from the northern part of the city and you're going down a hill, and the only way to get down that hill in the speed limit is to have your brakes on. I actually tested that. So-
Yeah, it's still 25 down the hill. It goes to 35 at the bottom.
Don't give the police any idea.
Yeah. So counsel, I appreciate that you brought the issue directly to the council and that it didn't, didn't come out of committee. Is there anyone that is supportive of this idea that would support Mr. Goodman's request to allow for signs to be placed in that area, even for a designated period of time to see if it is effective or how, whether it's appreciated by people?
You know, I live on B Street myself, and that's the ward that, for which I was elected as city council. So I drive up and down B all the time, all different times, day and night. And yeah, there are deer, a lot. Sometimes walking across the street, sometimes standing in the street, sometimes wondering what I do in there driving. They're pretty comfortable. But there is enough, I do think there's enough vision on both the east side and the west side as you're driving north or driving south, to see the deer before they come to the road. I wouldn't be opposed to, the mayor said this is an idea, maybe a suggestion for a temporary sign, to see maybe what the response might be from the rest of the community. A sign, maybe one sign, somewhere placed in the road. And the city can see what the cost might be, whether or not it's burdensome to maintain it, whether or not it results in perhaps some greater sense of safety by the citizens there. But if it doesn't, and, or if it turns out to be something that's going to be burdensome to the city, I think we ought to, we ought to think about maybe after a trial period removing it. And if not, maybe we keep it.
I appreciate that.
So if that's a suggestion or a motion, entertain that to see if there's support for that.
Motion is that the city, I guess I'm a point of information, can the city ask that a citizen actually pay for the installation?
I don't know that that's really our issue, frankly.
I don't think cost was our concern.
If you, yeah, if you approve a sign, we'll-
I make a motion that then the city look into and install on a temporary basis, let's say 90 days, a sign, one sign, a warning of possibly a deer at a strategic location to determine-
Now, I don't know if we're going to pay for a sign for 90 days.
Okay.
I would just say, either you're going to put the sign up or not put it up. I, personally, I don't think you need to go with anything temporary.
Okay. Then the motion is to place a sign on B Street, warning of deer, deer crossing.
Do you want to include, to Katie's point, that maybe we include something about, limited to streets with speed limits of 35 or higher? So not everybody in town sees the one, and then it's going to start wanting one also?
If you're talking in the Crow Creek area, isn't that the 25?
That's 35, actually.
Oh, going up the-
At the bottom of the hill, yeah, just before you get to Crow Creek, it becomes 35.
35, okay.
Because, I mean, we're in the same boat as everybody else. I came home, we live in the middle of town. I came home the other night and we had seven laying in my yard. And so they are all over.
They're literally everywhere.
Yeah.
I'm fine with adding that to the motion, yeah. Again, I'm not sure it's a solution, but I think it's worth trying, yeah.
Okay, so the motion then is to approve one sign for North B Street.
For northbound traffic? So on the east side, right? On the sidewalk side or on the non-sidewalk side?
I think on the sidewalk side. It's a two-way side. You're going to see it from both sides, yes.
Right.
So that would be on the east side, and it would be, the condition of that is, that it is in a 35 mile-an-hour speed zone. Is there a second for that?
I'll second it.
Okay, second by To Hill? Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Andy?
Yes.
To Hill?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Anderson?
No.
Hallie?
No.
Flornoy?
No.
Rasmussen?
No.
Okay. Motion fails, but thank you very much for bringing our attention to it.
Okay.
Okay. Next, counsel, will move to a request for street closure. And this is for the annual farm show. Ruston Lippincott, the director of the CVB, will not be able to be here this evening. This is the fifth year for this event, so I think it is something that you've approved in the past. I think you have a copy of the map in the request.
Did you see our map?
Yeah.
Jason, can you put the map on the monitor, please?
Don't embarrass Ruston like that, please. He'll-
I think he'll be very proud of it.
It's refrigerator-worthy.
It's his kid drew them.
Post that on your fridge.
Okay. There you go. Those, those-
Those are some big back doors.
Knowing that it's a farm show, I can see tractors there, so. So the request then is to close Main Street, and I guess that is between Briggs and Hempstead.
Just that one block, yep.
Yeah. Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Hallie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay, thank you. Next, counsel, will move to our resolution action items. First, we have the confirmation of selection of an engineering company for the Highway One South project. Our city engineer, Melanie, give us the background on that, please.
Yeah. So the first thing I want to point out with this selection is that it was not a price proposal that the company submitted to us, or to the committee, that it was considered based off of qualifications. Three companies submitted to the request for qualifications. Shive Hattery, McClure Engineering Company, and French Reniker. The committee felt that all three were reputable and decided to interview all of them on February 4th. Each company had unique assets to bring to the project. And after much discussion and a couple of meetings and checking with some references, the committee voted four to one to recommend Shive Hattery as the engineer for the project. Your motion tonight is simply to authorize Erin and I to begin, for lack of a better term, negotiation with Shive Hattery to enter into a contract. The engineering agreement will come to council once that's prepared. Nathan with Shive Hattery is here tonight. He's the project manager for the team, and he can answer any questions or give you a brief update on Shive Hattery if you'd like.
I would put you on the spot and just say, what's shown? What made them shine above the other firms? Michael?
I can answer. I was on that committee. As you know, there's discussion of using Roundabout at the intersection of Highway One South in Libertyville. And Shive Hattery has the most experience installing those in Iowa, and they also have a lot of experience installing them as a first in a community in Iowa. So those were two huge pluses that just made the committee feel like they would, just felt comforted that they had that level of experience for this kind of project. Because this is a very unique project for us. It's a first. So I think that, that was the consensus, I believe, for our choice.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any questions for our guest from Shive Hattery? If not, I'm sure we'll see you again. So entertain a motion to confirm the selection of Shive Hattery for the Highway One South project.
So moved.
Second.
By Hallie, second by Anderson. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
To Hill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, counsel, we have a public hearing that will open, and this is on approval for the drawings, specifications, and form of contract for the City Hall Accessibility Project. Open the public hearing at this time and ask if there are any comments, public comments. Seeing done, we'll close the public hearing. And Melanie, if you can give us an update on the project, please.
Yeah, I'd like to direct the council's attention to the summary that Jason's bringing up on the screen. This letter was written by Cindy Larson of Kleiner Associates, the architect on the project. And this does a good job of writing out what is happening rather than having you go through the plans. But what I'd like to point out and discuss with you particularly is, in her first paragraph, she states that "In some areas, the existing configurations of the building prevents full compliance with ADA requirements. In all cases, the non-compliant features are either unchanged, therefore creating no more hazard than they already are, or are improved to create less of a hazard." And the, there's two, there's only two of these items that she wants to point out. The first one being on the exterior ramp. ADA requires that there is a railing on both sides of the ramp, so we're going to keep the outside railing that is there. And then we're going to be installing a handrail along the building against the brick. ADA requires that that handrail goes to the platform or the landing and beyond. That is where our doors are. And so her-
In both directions.
What?
In both directions.
Yes, yeah. And so her and I decided that having two egress doors for a public meeting space like this was the higher priority than extending that railing up all the way, thus making only one entrance. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. We discussed this this afternoon, but the new design has the two doors inset.
Correct.
Okay, so why wouldn't the railing go, so it actually isn't the doors, it's the window that is still there, or the lighting? Because-
It would have to go past the lighting that's going to stay.
Past that light, right. So it's not actually the door itself, because they can use the first door to enter it. It's really that, and did we maybe consider taking that out?
Well, it's, it would be the, not only is the glass that doesn't open, would that, that would be covered up by the handrail, but also the southern door would be covered up.
Would be covered by also, even because we consider the northern door the actual entry point?
Right.
The one, okay.
And, and then, well, it's based off where the landing is, I'm sorry. And, but if we would extend it all the way, we would only have one entrance and exit, even with it being pushed back into the building. And one doorway.
Right.
And given the capacity of City Hall, the two doors are really needed for exit.
Yep.
That would be a violation of the fire code.
Yes. So it was one or the other. And we, I'm not for sure if it's the fire code, that's why I hesitate, but it is violation of life safety standards. And so that is why we chose to go with that. Because we are making the situation better than what it is now. The only other solution would be to rebuild the ramp, and felt that wasn't the way to go for this project and the way to spend the funds. As we continue on down the page, it talks about the rest of the project. As the mayor mentioned, we are bringing those doors in, the outside doors into the building two feet. So there won't be, you'll be able to walk around the doors when they're open, which I think we've all gotten caught there at one time or another. Also, and I think it's on there, also in the front vestibule, there is just a very small ramp that's in between the two doors. Again, I think we've all walked over that and kind of stumbled a little bit. That is going to be flattened out, so it's a straight slope between the two doors. That does meet ADA compliance, but we'll, we'll make that a lot better. In the reception area, we have the lower billing clerk station, as well as opening up the hallway to the bathrooms to provide a little bit better visibility, not into the bathrooms, but to the hallway, so you know that staff knows if somebody's back there. And then the restrooms, the largest change is going to be the restrooms, making them ADA accessible. In the council chambers, we have the ramp that will be along this side. The podium's going to more or less stay where it is. Because we have a wireless microphone, we'll keep it at the height, but we will have a ramp that, and a railing that would come behind me. Also in the council chambers, the back exit door is going to be switched to an outswinging one, which is again, another life safety improvement that the architect recommended. The only other item that doesn't 100% meet ADA compliance is the rear entry door. There needs to be 48 inches between the outside door and the inside door. To get that full 48 inches, we would have to reconstruct the wall to the mayor's office. There's that window there. We're about seven inches short. We decided that if there was an employee that needed proper accommodations, they would likely have a parking spot on the front of the building, and therefore the most direct access to the building would be through the front. So having the back door 100% accessible, we felt like this was a good, again, a good use of the money, given that we do meet it in other areas. Other than that, the building's going to, or the inside's going to get a bit of a facelift, new carpet in here and painting as we're doing the work, so it'll look, a lot of items are being replaced. As far as timeline-
Well, I just have a question. This was required by the USDA, right?
Correct.
So did they sign off on this plan?
They have, they have allowed us to go to bids. They have told us in every single email, it's the city's responsibility to make sure the project is ADA, that it meets ADA. And we've asked them to say, "Well, are you okay with this?" And they said, "No, it's the city's responsibility." So like our sidewalks downtown and stuff, we've done our best to accommodate. And that's, it wouldn't necessarily hold up in court if it was brought to our attention, but given the funds and the situation and the building, we don't feel like we can really accommodate any better. I think I need like an attorney to answer that better.
But they're not going to hold up, they're not going to hold up our money.
Right.
They're saying that we can, we have the ability to set the standard for our building.
They're not going to allow us to break Department of Justice regulations, but they're also
They're saying that we have the ability to set the standard for our building.
They're not going to allow us to break Department of Justice regulations, but they're also not going to enforce it.
Yeah, that's my understanding of ADA enforcement is a little bit of a gray area. There's... They give you credit for making your best effort and oftentimes don't hold you to exact standards.
I'm only concerned about the USDA releasing their money.
Their money. Yes, they have allowed that, and they've signed off, allowed for us to go to bids.
I think the ultimate question is, would Mr. Morrissey be willing to defend us? Yes? Okay. We're getting a head nod back there, so...
Head nod, and absolutely. Okay, any other questions for our city engineer at this time regarding this project?
Last thing I want to point out, if there aren't any questions, is the timeline. If you approve this, we'll start advertising for bids tomorrow. We have a pre-bid meeting scheduled for March 5th, or March 6th at 11:00 a.m. Bids are due March 21st for consideration at your second meeting in March. The architect's estimate for the work is $230,000, which gives us more than 20% contingency in the budget going in into bids. And if all goes well, we hope to start work sometime in May.
Okay. Thank you, Melanie. Appreciate that, and the pictures were...
Yeah.
The renderings were inspiring to see. Look forward to the front of the building, really, going through that transformation. So, entertain a motion, then, to approve the drawings, plans, specifications for contract of the City Hall Accessibility Project.
So moved.
Moved by Anderson, second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Yes, we'll set a... Next item would be to set a public hearing for March 25th, which would be the two council meetings from tonight, and that would be for the nuisance abatement schedule of assessments. And again, these are delinquent charges that have been assessed to people who've either not mowed their lawns or shoveled their walks, and if those aren't taken care of before that time, they will be assessed on their taxes. So, entertain a motion to set the public hearing for March 25th.
So moved.
Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Gandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Next, we have a public hearing on our fiscal year 2020 budget, and that we will set for the next meeting, which will be Monday, March 11th at 7:00 p.m. So, the budget process has been completed. We'll get an update on that from the Ways and Means Committee this evening, but entertain a motion to set the public hearing for the budget on March 11th.
So moved.
Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Gandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay, thank you. Next, we have acceptance of the Court Street Extension Paving Project as final. Going to invite Matt, if he would give us an update. We have the information in your letter, but if there's anything else that you need to add...
No, I guess what we have for you tonight is the acceptance of Court Street, which is, as most of you know, is a part of the district for the Neighborhood Builders and Developers Project out there. I believe the original... Let me get my notes here. We have two pay estimates on there for you tonight. The first is the final for the seeding, which was completed in November, and the second is just for the project retainage. Typically, we would hold these projects back and not accept them until the spring or summertime to make sure that the grass has grown, but given that the alliance and the utilities have kind of torn up some of the seeding, the developers out there have decided to go ahead and accept the seeding themselves. So, if there's any issues that need to be redone, then the Neighborhood Builders and Developers would take care of that when they're doing their project seeding for the townhomes.
We're just not sure spring's going to come this year.
Sure, yes.
So, the two amounts, council, would be $3,800 and $9,613.93 in retainage.
And we're releasing the retainage tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
And tonight would start your four-year bond work on the project as well.
So moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Hallie, second by Anderson to accept the project as final. Any other discussion?
I just have one question.
Yes, go ahead.
Do we have it in writing from Neighborhood Builders that they're going to take on that responsibility?
I got an email from Chris.
You do have it in writing?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments, council? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay. Next, council, we have two items by resolution, and this will be to accept legal services with our city attorney, John Morrissey, for Step Two, and also for the City Accessibility Project. These are required because of the use of USDA funds to have this as part of our public record. So, we'll take the first one, and that would be for accepting legal services agreement with Morrissey Law for Step Two.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. And then, similarly, in alignment with the USDA project, funding for the City Hall Accessibility Project, acceptance of legal services and agreement with Morrissey Law, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay. Next, council, we have two items by resolution, and this will be to accept legal services with our city attorney, John Morrissey, for Step Two, and also for the City Accessibility Project. These are required because of the use of USDA funds to have this as part of our public record. So, we'll take the first one, and that would be for accepting legal services agreement with Morrissey Law for Step Two.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. And then, similarly, in alignment with the USDA project, funding for the City Hall Accessibility Project, acceptance of legal services and agreement with Morrissey Law, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay. Next, council, we have two items by resolution, and this will be to accept legal services with our city attorney, John Morrissey, for Step Two, and also for the City Accessibility Project. These are required because of the use of USDA funds to have this as part of our public record. So, we'll take the first one, and that would be for accepting legal services agreement with Morrissey Law for Step Two.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Thank you. And then, to complete the full borrowing, entertain a motion to approve $9 million in borrowing for the same project.
So moved.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Thank you. And then, to complete the full borrowing, entertain a motion to approve $9 million in borrowing for the same project.
So moved.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Thank you. And then, to complete the full borrowing, entertain a motion to approve $9 million in borrowing for the same project.
So moved.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The next council, I'll invite our city attorney, John Morrissey, up. We have easement land acquisitions for Step Two to go over this evening.
Melanie says we only have three left. That means we have, if you approve these tonight, we have 74 of 77 in the bag.
Wow.
So, this Step Two project is considerably more, I guess I'll call it paper-intensive than Step One was. Step One's an expensive project, but this is an extensive project as far as all of the different backyards and people's driveways and so forth that were interrupting to get our pipe below the ground.
And the three remaining are projected to be as easy as these last three?
No.
Oh, okay.
I wish I could say that. One of them's been holding on a long time, and two of them, it's a matter of more negotiation. Wouldn't that be a fair statement?
Yes, but we've had positive communication within the last four weeks.
All right. I don't want to take away anything positive, getting close. So, the three we have tonight, two of them involve permanent and temporary easements. The way they're on your agenda, they start with Brenton and Rachel Clark. The third page of the resolution describes what we've agreed to do with them. I think the biggest thing with Brenton was that we agreed to not allow construction to take place between October 1st and January, should be January 15. That's an important hunting season at this particular location, is what I can figure out. But other than that, they agreed on a price of $12,950 plus $100 for the proof of their title origin, and we get 2.52 acres of permanent easement and 6.11 acres of temporary easement, which is an important single tract for this improvement. So, any questions?
Okay. Thank you, John. Entertain a motion, then, to approve the acquisition from the Clarks.
So moved.
The easement acquisition, that is.
Moved.
Moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay. Thank you, John. We'll see you for the last three. Next, council, in my report, I have one reappointment for you this evening to the Carnegie Museum Board, and that is Shelley Urban. I'd like to recommend Shelley for reappointment.
So moved.
Moved by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. And then, just a quick update on the downtown lighting project. At last week's Ways and Means Committee, it was discussed, because there is money that's been designated in the budget before budget approval, final budget approval of this item. We did contact Alliant, and they were willing to write an RFP that we could quickly get out to some other potential bidders to, you know, come back with the best possible option for the city in terms of pricing. So, we're hoping to have that for you by the next meeting, and to get something out for approval in that regard. So, that is underway. That's everything that I have in my report. We'll move to our committee report.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yes, sure.
Just from lack of knowledge, where is the funding for the downtown lighting? Where is it proposed to come from?
So, that was a discussion.
Okay.
It's intended to come from the backfill payments.
Okay.
And over the next three to four years. Now, there isn't absolute certainty on those payments, but it doesn't appear that the legislature is going to change anything in this session. The last bill that they were considering had Fairfield receiving three more years of payments. But this is, you know, the Ways and Means Committee had a good discussion about this. They have other options for funding this forward as well, but I think before they make a recommendation of the council on how it will ultimately be funded, we wanted to get the best possible price in front of you before we did that. Tom, Doug, does that cover it?
I think that pretty well covers it.
Okay. Any other questions, then? All right, great. Then, we'll move to our Ways and Means Committee meeting. Tom?
Again, as the mayor said, we had a meeting last Wednesday. We do have a proposed budget that will come before the council next week. Just in general, I think the millage rate, you know, not the overall taxes, because of the assessments, we have no control over, but it's done, I think it's about 14 cents. But the one thing, and there is a schedule that Rebecca attached to these, if you go back up to the, where I was talking about...
Action room, to set the public hearing.
Yeah, to set the public hearing. There's a schedule there for about the last 10 years. I think it shows the assessed values that we've had in the millage rate, so it kind of gives you a little history, so that you can see what has happened with the...
Grown by 31% in the last 10 years.
Yes, that's right. And also, so the assessed values have definitely gone up, and the overall tax asking on a millage rate basis has decreased, you know, which is what we're trying to accomplish. So, but again, and some of you, I know several have already asked for some of the details on the budget. If there's other things that you wish to see, like contact Becca, and she will, she can, hopefully, she can send it to you without cutting down any more trees, but if you need it by paper, that can happen.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for the Ways and Means Committee? If not, we'll move to project update. Melanie?
Already covered a lot of the items that's on my update tonight. Mainly, the first page is entirely sanitary sewer projects, I just noticed. The one that I want to point out to you tonight is that after several years, we are finally moving forward on the Libertyville Road sanitary sewer project. This project includes 3,300 feet on the north side of Libertyville Road and 3,000 feet on the south side of the road. We have all of the easements, and French Reniker is finishing up the drawings and the specifications. We hope to go to bid in the next 30 days.